Please be advised this public meeting of the Washington County Commissioners is being held on audio live stream on the Commissioners Facebook page as we do with every meeting. We're starting with a prayer. Today is Dalton Thompson of Claysville. He's a contract manager and senior buyer with the Washington County Purchasing Department. A fantastic employee of Washington County. So, thank you Dalton for leading us in prayer.
Thank you for having me. If anyone has an issue with the prayer, I just want to say they pulled me off the street. They have no association with me whatsoever. Lord, we thank you for freedom that we have to come together around our leaders and offer prayer to you. We know so many that lack that freedom. I would ask that you would comfort those who may be fearful or dismayed over current events, that you would offer the hope that only your spirit brings. We also ask that those encouraged by the current events be built up with wisdom and faithfulness. Lord, be with our leaders locally and federally. Please guide their actions with integrity according to your will. Please bless and build them up with the courage to act and the wisdom. Allow them to continue and begin anew their work for the members of this community tirelessly. Let all things bring glory to you. Do not fail to fulfill your promises to protect God and bring hope to the people and the leaders of this county. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Witness, we have someone to lead our pledge of allegiance. Now, Mr. Chairman, if you bear with me for a moment. I've known this man for a while, but I didn't realize your bio until I read it. You're a pretty unique person we have here leading our pledge. Man, I can't wait to get together with you again and talk to you a little bit about it. But let me read it here. Leading us in the pledge of allegiance is U.S. Army veteran Russell Lamb. He served for four years as part of the Old Guard, which is a special unit at Arlington, where he attended events, ceremonies, and handled the memorial affairs of fallen soldiers. Specialist Russell also guarded the tomb of the unknown soldier and participated in funeral details at Arlington National Cemetery. That's quite an honor for a military person to get assigned that. It's about your character and everything else when you get that assignment. And so, congratulations and thank you for our service. Today, he's a member of the National Pikes Steam, Gas, and Horse Association, and he lives in Fredericktown with his wife, and they have three children, three grandchildren. Specialist, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I want to entertain a motion to approve minutes number 1194 dated October 17th, 2024.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. We have a special word of business today. We have two proclamations that Commissioner Janice and Commissioner Maggi are going to read. Before that, we recognized and took a picture with our Elections Department. There are some fantastic departments that we have here in Washington County. I'm very proud of the work that we do here. But these people in our Elections Office have worked tirelessly. I don't know if a lot of you realize, but Tuesday was Election Day and there wasn't an election. So regardless if you're happy or sad about the situation, there's business and work and a lot of it that goes into that. And it's managed by our Washington County, and it's under the direction of our fearless leader, Melanie Ostrander. And I would be remiss if, and I know I speak for the three of us, I'll let them say whatever they want afterwards, but you're an absolute rock star. And we appreciate the work that you do. We appreciate, I mean, we were here at 9:00, 10:00, almost 1 o'clock in the morning. We're back up early the next day. There was a lot of snafus that happened throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country. And I'm happy to say none of them were Washington County because of the proactive approach that you took. You've been planning this since, you know, August, July, we're having meetings. And you guys are absolutely amazing. And I'd just like to applaud you and recognize you for the amazing job you guys did in our election that took place on Tuesday. So, thank you, Elections Department.
I'd like to add also, you know, how important this election was. And literally, like Commissioner Sherman said, went off without a hitch. I mean, with people calling in with questions, how many provisional ballots? How many absences? Boom, boom. She didn't have to go look at anything. She came back with quick and immediate answers. It was just impressive, the pressure you were under. And as the chairman said, we appreciate that.
I'm going to echo what my colleague said here, but one thing I'll add is their job is absolutely thankless. And I can without a doubt tell you that their department, especially during this time, I think gets yelled at on the phone and in person more than any department in the county. And that is a complete thankless job. And Melanie and her staff have all done an incredible job with the constituents and dealing with their complaints and their anger regardless of the situation. So, I know that that is not easy. And a lot of times, they call our office and we speak with them, and then we have to direct them back to her. She has to have the final, she has to be the calm one. So, I appreciate all that you do, Melanie and the rest of the staff. So, thank you guys. Give them another round of applause.
Now, unfortunately, you guys got to go back to work.
We have deadlines, so we're going back in the office.
We have a United States Senate race. It might be pre-count, so.
Yes. So, thank you for recognizing us. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Get back to work. We also have a proclamation read by Commissioner Electric Janice for Hunger and Homelessness. Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas homelessness and hunger impact individuals across all racial, ethnic, and social norms, and according to Washington County's annual point in time count, January 2024, homelessness has increased by approximately 42% since 2022. And whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including but not limited to poverty, domestic violence, and the shortage of affordable housing, and to encourage support for homelessness assistance, service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. Whereas the intent of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month is consistent with community organizations which are committed to sheltering, providing, and offering supportive services as well as meals, basic needs, and supplies to individuals and families experiencing homelessness. And whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month 2024 is Harvest for Hope, so as a community, there is an ample opportunity to share one's harvest and provide hope. And whereas the Washington County Board of Commissioners recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many people throughout Washington County, and now therefore it be resolved that we, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, including Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week from November 17th to 24th in Washington County. And we call upon all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need of support of their fellow citizens, areas, businesses, and non-properties and entities alike. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt this on the 7th day of November 2024 in Washington, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Accepting this proclamation on behalf of the Washington County Housing and Homelessness is Nicole Muscher. Did I pronounce that right?
No. She has to tell us how to pronounce. I always get pronounced.
First, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the acknowledgement of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month and their ongoing support with all of our human services initiatives. Thank you. Hunger and homelessness are pressing issues that affect a significant number of individuals across our community regardless of their age, ethnicity, or their background. Alarmingly, homelessness has increased by nearly 50% in the past four years alone, highlighting an urgent need for collective action. Additionally, close to 20,000 residents in our area struggle with food insecurity every day. And keep in mind, this is a challenge that can impact any of us at any given time. It's crucial for us to raise awareness around these social issues and to confront the stigma and stereotypes often associated with those experiencing these hardships. Oftentimes, those who face financial difficulties, it's due to a variety of circumstances that are completely beyond their control. As members of this community, it is our responsibility to recognize and respect their dignity and worth while also working collaboratively towards solutions. An essential aspect of addressing homelessness in Washington County and all across the country is the annual point in time count. This count is mandated by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it helps us to gather critical data on all individuals who are experiencing both sheltered and unsheltered homelessness. The results significantly impact our housing funding and resources for our community members in need. This year, we're really eager to collaborate with our Commissioners in the upcoming year's point in time count. If you are interested in participating at all, just let me know. Lastly, in recognition of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, I'd like to invite everyone in our community to join us for our first annual Washington County Harvest for Hope celebration on November 20th. It will be held at the Doubletree by Hilton Pittsburgh Meadowlands. This initiative is made possible through the amazing partnerships we have built with neighbor-to-neighbor of southwestern Pennsylvania, the Community Circle Food Pantry, the Local Housing Options Team, and of course, the Doubletree by Hilton. Together, we aim to foster understanding, support our neighbors in need, and take meaningful steps towards addressing hunger and homelessness in our community. So, everyone come out and enjoy a day filled with a traditional Thanksgiving meal, fun activities, and of course, community spirit. If you're interested in getting more involved, we welcome volunteers and donations to help make this event a success. There are some flyers and more information about those opportunities over here on the table. Please feel free to take them, make copies, share them with everyone you know, everyone you meet. We welcome all participation. In closing, I just want to emphasize that housing and food are fundamental human rights. Sadly, many of our neighbors here in Washington County struggle to access these basic necessities every single day. As a community, we have the power to bridge these gaps and ensure that everyone's needs are met. Thank you.
Next, Commissioner Larry Maggi is going to read the proclamation for Veterans Day for this November 11th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas on November 11, 2024, we honor and celebrate the bravery and sacrifices of all veterans who have served our nation in the armed forces and the 14,000 veterans who make their home in Washington County. And whereas these courageous individuals have defended our freedoms, faced adversity, and exemplified the spirit of service that defines our country. And whereas we recognize the families of veterans who have provided unwavering support and strength throughout their loved ones, military journey. And whereas it is our responsibility to ensure that veterans receive the respect, the care, and opportunities they deserve as they reintegrate into civilian life. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2024 as Veterans Day in Washington County, and call upon all our citizens to express their gratitude and support for those who have served and to remember the enduring legacy of their sacrifices. Let us come together to honor their commitment and reaffirm our dedication to our veterans and their families. Dot that this 7th day of November 2024 in Washington, Pennsylvania. Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption.
Second, and thank you Commissioner Maggi for your service.
Thank you, Electric. If I could just say, Mr. Chairman, real quick.
I'm taking the mic from you as a veteran to talk about Veterans Day.
I'm sure Bobby will talk about Veterans Day. It's for Veterans Day, not Memorial Day. Some people give Memorial Day a better, Memorial Day, we recognize those who've lost their lives. Veterans Day, we recognize all veterans. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're all excited about it.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Accepting this proclamation is Dr. Bobby Cumson from the Washington County Veterans Affairs. Bobby?
Well, I don't have as much to say as Nicole did, but I want to point out a couple of things. Yes, Veterans Day is just for veterans. Those of us that don't wear the uniform anymore, but we still interact with veterans around the community. Mr. Lamb obviously is a member of the American Legion. We have the BFWs. A lot of those veterans participate in things like Honor Guard, where they will go to the national cemetery, or they'll go to local cemeteries and honor those veterans who pass away, which, and we do that on Memorial Day. But I want to talk about veterans' benefits around Washington County. Pennsylvania recently came out with statistics. Over $1.1 billion are received by veterans on disability claims around the state of Pennsylvania. That's billion with a V. Washington County, our veterans receive over $23 million in benefits that they get from the federal government. And that's not including the health care that they receive. Our Washington County CBOC, our community-based outpatient clinic, fantastic. And many of our veterans come here, but some veterans don't know about it. So, if you see a veteran, meet a veteran, let them know. They can come here to the local community. They don't have to go to Pittsburgh to get their health care. I also want to point out, along with Nicole, for the holidays, a lot of veterans, they get lonely, they get depressed, they isolate. We encourage them to come out to events like this for our Thanksgiving dinner. Invite them. Have them come out. Just let them get involved in the community because we don't want to lose any more veterans to suicide. Thank you. And thank the Commissioners for the proclamation.
Thank you, Bobby, for the work that you do. If I've said it once, I've said it a dozen, 100 times. I can't tell you how many times the Commissioners are out and about the community and we meet with a veteran, and they tell us of an amazing job, and my benefits are all screwed up, but I quickly get help anywhere, and I came in, and you guys took care of it immediately. So, I mean, you helped the greatest people in our nation, and thank you for what you do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add a quick comment to Dr. Bobby, your department is very small, and you guys do a fantastic job. And for whatever reason, and my assistant can vouch for this, my phone on the side of it has all the directors that we communicate with frequently and people in the office. And for some reason, your name is on there, though I don't have to call you often, I can see when you're on the phone, and it is virtually every second of every day. So, she's always doing something and working very hard. So, thank you for the work that you do.
No, we're not monitoring you. I said, we're not monitoring you. Maybe. We don't have any agenda comments, which brings us to our old business with our solicitor. Ms. Solicitor. Mrs. Solicitor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Letter A, purchasing. On behalf of the Redevelopment Authority of the County of Washington, respectfully request the Commissioners approve change order number one with Eurovia Atlantic Coast LLC of Pittsburgh, PA for the Airport Southside Taxiway Project. The $214,921.92 is to be paid with grant funds, and the $11,004.20 will be funded from Act 13 Gas Lease Money. This change was reviewed and recommended by RACW and Gannett Fleming Trans Systems, who are the engineers for the project.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing. On behalf of the Courts, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the purchase of audio equipment for Court Rooms 1, 2, 4, and 5 from Horizon Information Services, Glen Shaw, PA. If approved, the total cost of $44,290 will be paid from the Court's IT budget. The proposed purchase will be made via CoStars and therefore does not require bidding.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. Now, I'm going to move into our Chief Clerk.
Thank you. Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the following board appointments. Pat Ross to the Southwestern Pennsylvania Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, and Edward Martin as former director, and Nick Sherman as the county commissioner to the Conservation District Board.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners award a grant to the male blind youth home in the amount of $116,744. The cost will be paid via ARPA funds.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Mr. Chairman, I would like just for note for the record, I'm going to vote on this motion, but I would note it for the meeting minutes that I have some concerns about the process of distributing the ARPA money. We need to have a definitive process to discuss these projects such as this one. The projects appeared to be on our agenda yesterday, and as far as I know, there was no other discussions in it. I know there are a lot of other ARPA requests out there throughout the county, but we do not discuss. And we need to have a transparent, fair method to do that. I vote yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an agreement between the county and NAI Burns and Scalo as owner and representative for the new public safety building.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve ordinance number 2024-01, authorizing the incurrence by the County of Washington of non-electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds, series of 2024, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12.5 million, for the purpose of providing funds for and towards financing the cost of a new county public safety building, for other capital projects, and paying the cost of issuance of the bonds.
Sub moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
No.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the purchase and sale agreement between the Washington County Authority and the County of Washington for the transfer of property that presently includes the Courthouse Square Building, garage, and county jail, where the future Justice Center and appurtenant facilities will be located.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Planning. Respectfully request the Commissioners award a contract to Skelly &amp; Lloyd in the amount of $37,600 to complete the NPDES permit for the Washington County Fairgrounds. Cost will be paid with Fairgrounds oil and gas funds.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Finance. On behalf of probation services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve and ratify the application for a continuing county adult probation and parole grant with PCCD. The grant is effective January, July, excuse me, the grant is effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025, and will be in the amount of $152,580, and no county funds are required.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with UPMC Western Psychiatric Hospital for the provision of the Partners for Family Empowerment Program for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025. The contract authorization amount is $234,605.60, and no additional county funds are required.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Frank C. Roney Jr. Esquire to serve as the Mental Health Review Officer for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2025. The contract authorization amount is $25,000, and no additional county funds are required.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement addendum with the Care Center, joint business as SPHS Care Center for the Person Center Forensic Service Funding Initiative for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. The contract authorization amount will be increased to $51,410, and no additional county funds are required.
Sub moved.
Second.
Please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing. Respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the advertising for proposals for an owner's representative for construction management projects.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing. Respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the advertising for proposals for workers' compensation services.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Purchasing. On behalf of buildings and grounds, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an addendum to the agreement with Scalise Industries Corporation, joint business as EMCOR Services Scalise Industries, for the provision of a fire alarm system, its maintenance, and upgrades, to include the newly obtained Tri-State Building. The cost will be $60,000, and will be effective from the date of agreement through December 31st, 2024, with the option to extend for a two-year, for an additional two-year period.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing. On behalf of the public defender, respectfully request the Commissioners approve a professional services attorney consultant agreement with Paul Charles Snyder Esquire. Mr. Snyder will provide legal representation for clients charged with serious criminal offenses. The agreement will be effective November 7, 2024, through December 31st, 2025, in the amount of $86,645, and will be funded with the Indigent Defense Grant and PCCD subgrant award.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing. On behalf of the District Attorney, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an agreement with Thompson Reuters for the provision of CLEAR for law enforcement plus subscriptions to users within the District Attorney's Office. This agreement includes a monthly fee of $251.00 for the first year, $210.54 for the second year, and $221.07 for the final year, and will be effective December 1st, 2024, for a 36-month period.
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Thank you, Chief Clerk. I'll move on to the segment of our public meeting for public comment. I have Kamel Papia.
Kamel Papia.
Ah, sorry about that, Kamel.
Good afternoon. I was a poll watcher, and I live in Lone Pine, but was assigned to Denora Number 5. Why, I don't know. I was not looking forward to it. I was looking forward. Ms. Papia, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Technical. I'm sorry. We're just putting on the clock. I apologize. Okay, now start over. Well, anyway, I went to Denora. I found it in the dark, and I encouraged everybody to volunteer for poll watching. I met people I probably would have never met before. I learned about Denora, and it was fabulous. I was trained by the PA Voter Protection Team, which I don't think you have to. And there are a lot of do's and don'ts. And we only had one incident. I was there from 6:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. and was totally exhausted when I left. Those poll workers were there from 6:00 a.m. till they finalized, wrapped up, which was probably close to 10:00 p.m. if everything went correctly. So, whether it's the midterm or presidential, I encourage everyone to volunteer and support the process and the poll workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamel. Thank you for taking time on your schedule and doing that to make sure that there's election integrity and ideas. Again, we thank the Elections Department. And they do a great job, but I mean, that's just like the tip of the sword. I mean, all the poll workers, all the judges of elections, all everyone. I mean, you.
I'm sorry I didn't mention them.
Yeah, I was so, me, me have to die when I was thanking everyone. That's why we're doing it. I just, I do, I, you know, the workers like you guys are amazing. So, thank you for doing it. It was, I did an interview, and I said, it's truly watching democracy in action. And it's, again, whether you're happy or sad about it, it's, it's great. And I'm really happy to get people like you there doing that. So, thank you. Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting a motion for a tax refund request in the amount of $11,393.31.
Sub moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Announcing Chief Clerk.
An executive session was held at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, November 6, following the agenda meeting to discuss. meeting to discuss personnel. The next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, November 21 in this room. Today's Salary Board meeting has been canceled, and the Retirement Board will immediately follow this meeting. All county offices will be closed on Monday, November 11, 2024, and observance of Veterans Day.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. There would be no more business to be brought before this board. We stand adjourned. Thank you.